Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November fourteenth River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the October twenty-fourth Regular and Closed Session Meeting.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Bjork.
I move to approve the bills in the amount of $2,437,093.11, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to talk about, now would be the time.
Good evening, Mayor Dan. Got your speakerphone pointed in the right direction here. It was heading for you. I noticed you were comparing notes on gray hair.
You win.
I win. Some advantage to that. Council members, fellow guests, I'm William Hanson from River Falls, and I'm actually here to encourage you to support renewable energy. You're not a bit surprised about that. But I guess that I want to make the point that our renewable energy, our primary source of renewable energy here in River Falls are the hydros. The hydros have produced eighty-five percent of the renewable energy that was produced in this past year. The smallest of our hydros, the Junction Falls Dam, produces nearly twice the electricity that the solars do. I like the solar energy, good idea. I really like hydros. Hydros are 24/7. There's some question about the profitability of the sale of our hydroelectricity, and it is profitable. In 2016, we actually had a profit of $125,000 that came from the hydros there. If you look back over the past five years of the sale of electricity, the revenue from the 2012 to 2016 is $378,000. This is good business. I am encouraging us to work to improve our dams, lakes, and hydros. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Okay, does anybody else has anything they'd like to say?
Mayor, I have a public comment.
Yep.
I would like to recognize Veterans Day. It was observed this last Saturday, November eleventh. I'd like to thank the veterans in our community for their service. I would also like to personally thank the American Legion Post 121 for their commitment to service to our city for providing financial support to veterans in need, as well as donating to a local free health clinic, the Boy Scouts, American Legion Baseball, youth hockey, 4-H, and more. The American Legion provides high school scholarship each year, sends three deserving students to learn at Badger Boy State, to learn the workings of government and good civics. Their community involvement goes beyond money, recognizing military honors to all local veterans, funerals if requested, recognizing colors at community events, parades, visiting local schools and nursing homes on Veterans Day, and provides honors at all area cemeteries on Memorial Day. So a special thanks to you, American Legion Post 121, for your service and their commitment to our city. At 4:00 PM on Friday nights, the Legion bar is open to the public. If you are a veteran interested in joining, you can call them at (715) 425-7362. Or you can come Friday for coffee gathering between 8:00 to 10:00 AM, which is open to all veterans. Thank you, Mayor.
Sean.
Bingo this Friday, too. Mayor Dan, I have something, too, if I could. I'd like to just get, if we could, some clarification why we're so early in this, to talk about what our even odd parking is, because there's been people asking about it. And Jeff is here, and we've already talked a little bit, so if we could just have just a little briefing on that, so people out there on TV land could hear it, and we could hear it as well.
As my understanding, you want the alternate night parking regulation.
Right.
Well, overnight tonight, it'll be the fifteenth at 1:00 AM. So at 1:00 AM, whatever that date is, which will be the fifteenth, that's an odd number, so you want to park on the odd side of the street. Okay. Any, I mean, up until 6:00 AM. And somewhere in the course, that's when you issue the parking tickets. We're usually done by 4:00 AM. And we don't normally double back on streets. Once we've cleared a street, we go on to the next one. Doesn't mean somebody couldn't come home at 3:00 in the morning and park there. We just aren't going to double up the streets, unless there's a snowplow issue or something like that where we're called back. But typically, it's just that easy. At 1:00 AM, it's going to be the fifteenth, park on the odd side of the street.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, move on to first our public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing on a resolution to release Right-Away Easement in favor of the city of River Falls. This would be the alley between Broadway Street and East Park Street. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Well, okay, I'll close the council hearing, then we'll go into a public hearing. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anybody in the audience who has anything they'd like to say? Okay, I will close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the resolution of the release of Right-Away Easement in favor of the city of River Falls, alley between Broadway and East Park.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-18, amending Chapter seventeen related defenses. This is a second reading and disposition. Does anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of ordinance number 2017-18, amending Chapter seventeen related defenses. However, I would like it to be taken back to the Plan Commission after approval, to be rehashed.
Second. Any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question. I just want a better understanding of how this would affect fences that are already built. That's probably part of what you're asking, I imagine, too.
Amy, it won't affect anything.
Okay.
I mean, everything will be grandfathered. This will just be from now forward.
That answers my question on Dex, too. Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, was that your question?
Nope. So some of the things that I have, is I know a couple other council members have received some concerns from citizens regarding our fence ordinance due to the height. You know, we made it three feet in some yards, and some people have bigger yards, or they just want privacy on their through lot. And if you have a bigger dog, it can jump a three-foot fence. I've seen trained canines jump six, seven-foot fences, so depends on what you've got for an animal. I personally have received calls from a citizen about wanting a five-foot fence on a through lot. So they live on a street that has a street in their front yard, but they also have a street in the backyard. And it's really set back from where they want their fence, and they have a big dog. And they're afraid that the dog's going to put their front paws up on the four-foot fence and push themselves over. And it's reasonable to think that. Also, there's some privacy concerns that someone might have in their backyard, being a through lot. So that's why I want it sent back to the Plan Commission to rethink of the broad scope of how we can take care of all residents in the city, but also meet the objective of the ordinance.
Okay, so just to be clear, you moved to approve the resolution as written, and then for the Plan Commission to bring this back up again?
To relook at all scenarios in the city limits and all the potential scenarios, and bring back a better resolution in the future.
Hi. I have a technical question. Will this ordinance or variance is allowed?
Same with no?
Amy.
I think Amy can answer that, but...
Variances would, is this on?
Yes.
Variances would be allowed through the normal Board of Appeals process.
Oh, okay.
If there's a hardship, I guess.
Great, thank you.
I think, you know, there's a lot of discussion about this, both at Plan, and then after this came through. And I know the citizen who had the initial concern is here tonight, and I wanted to make sure that he was taken care of and his situation. But I think there's some more work that we should do at Plan on this as well. You know, it's, we always try to do the right thing the first time. Sometimes we don't always get it right, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to circle back and take a look at what I kind of think of as four different types of lots that we have in the city if we look at the residential stuff. So as a member of the Plan Commission, I agree with Mr. Gagne, and I think Mr. Watson's in agreement, and I hope the others are, too. But I think we could do better. I think we should take it back to Plan, live with what's here in front of us today so that people can get their stuff done that are expecting that, and then put better, put some better things around this one.
What type of timeframe do you think it'd be to come back with a revised one?
You know, I think, I would leave that at staff's discretion, based on the work that Plan would give them. I would think two months would be realistic at Brandy shaking her head yes, so I think that's what I'll go with, two months.
All right.
You know, the Plan Commission should have a fair shot at it, I think, to give some direction back to staff to say, here's what we're thinking, or here's what we think needs to be addressed. And then the next month, staff can take that and bring it back to Plan, and then from there, bring it back to Council.
Just for clarification, does the Plan Commission meet in December?
I believe so.
Okay.
Fifth? Yeah, fifth.
So if we had this back to us the first meeting in February, I know it's pushing it out a little bit. That's November, so really the first meeting in January would probably be reasonable, I would think.
Well, it'll probably go to a different, it'll probably go to at least two Plan Commission meetings.
Yeah, it'll be two Plan Commissions, so. I would say February's reasonable.
I would say February.
I hate to put a hard timeframe on it, because something might come. I would say that Plan would keep their eye on this.
Yep.
February sounds realistic.
Excellent.
Okay, anybody else?
And Council, can I just clarify that you, are you interested in a broad review, re-review of the fence ordinance, or specifically for the through lot issue?
I'd like the through lot issue taken care of, definitely. I'd like, obviously, when they're in there, you might as well take a look at the broader level of the city to make sure that we're looking at all facets.
Okay. I would suggest that the Council will allow that you allow me to discuss with staff what the timing will be based on our current workload.
Yes.
And the fact that we're not likely to have a lot of fence construction over the next few months. So we'll try to get something to you and timely, but we'll get back, we'll report back of when we expect to be able to complete the review.
Yep, I would defer to staff on their time.
Excellent.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I will close the council hearing. We'll open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-19. This resolution, or this creates regulations related to Dex entitled seventeen, zoning of the municipal code. This is a second reading and disposition. Oh, sorry. I was waiting for one of the council members to ask questions. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Otherwise, we'll close this public hearing and reopen up the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve ordinance 2017-19.
Second.
Questions or comments?
One question.
Yep.
Is the definition of gazebo, is it too vague, or do we need to define it more? That's a question I have for a person who wrote it. Was it Tony?
Well, planning, do you think it's too vague, is the question? Or do you think, or do they think it's too vague?
Part of why I ask is because it talks about the feet and proximity, and I know we mentioned it would be grandfathered in. But was that considered a standard for cities of our size, or, I'm not sure what the standards are. That's why I'm asking.
Oh. Amy?
So when we pulled these definitions, we did look at other codes in other communities. At this point, this was a number of months ago, so I can't tell you exactly which ones, but these were fairly standard definitions.
Okay.
I think with that and being grandfathered in, I'm pretty comfortable with voting for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anybody else? Okay, first and second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to consent agenda. Resolution approving agreement between the city of River Falls and the Pierce-Saint Croix counties regarding ride share taxi funds for the year 2018. Next one is a resolution to amend the South Main Street corridor study. Next one is a resolution for the acceptance of public improvements in Spring Creek Estates South. And the other, next one is a resolution for the acceptance of public improvements in Villas of Sterling Pond's Phase Two. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mayor, I'd like to pull consent agenda item number four.
Okay.
And five.
Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve consent agenda items number six and seven.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Sean, you pulled number four.
Resolution approving agreement between the city of River Falls and Pierce-Saint Croix counties regarding shared ride taxi funds of the year, for the year 2018. My question is, to what degree is a replacement van wheelchair accessible? Where the seats can be maneuvered with relative ease to accommodate them? Can it be easily used for people with mobility issues who use wheelchairs?
I'll try to answer that question. I'm not sure of the exact model that we would be purchasing with the funds. It's an estimate for 2018. We typically confer with the Department of Transportation, and they provide some assistance on the specking. We have had an incidence where we purchased a recommended spec that we didn't like. And I can't remember if it was the rear load.
I think it was the rear load.
The rear, there was a year where the DOT was recommending the rear load accessible models, and we didn't find that that was very good for our customers in River Falls. So I suspect we'll be with, there's only a couple companies that do these mobility vans. I think one is Braun Intertech, and there's another one that retrofits them. So I suspect we'll be, the replacement will be similar. But that will come in front of the Council when we actually purchase. We have to get bids, and then the bids come in front of the Council for purchasing the van. So I can't give you an exact spec now, but that is one of the requirements of the, some of the federal funding is that they're accessible vans.
Well, that answers my question. Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a... Oh, go ahead, Chris.
So I got a question. So we went away from the rear-loading vans. Is that primarily because they weren't loading out onto the curb, making folks go all the way around? Because I know some of the side loads, they actually load out their ramp onto the sidewalk, or...
You know, I'll have to get you more information to be sure and be specific, but I don't recall that being the case. I recall it was a configuration of the floor plan within the van itself that, when you got the rear, it had something to do with wheel wells and how chairs were maneuvered and the attached points, belt points and that in there, and I think we were having some issues with that. I don't recall it being a load or unload issue related to the ramp, but...
I seem to recall that there was an issue because of the suspension with the rear load. It was higher, and it was more difficult to get the chair, it was more of a steeper grade to get the chair up, and then there was a little bit of access in the back, but I could be mistaken.
I would have to, I'm sorry, I would have to check. I don't recall the exact reason, but it was a, it was not a successful...
No.
Purchase for us.
So what you're saying to answer Mr. Downing's question is that we've had problems in the past, and it will certainly be a consideration.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll, you know, we'll be cautious about trying to maintain some similarity between the vans we have, because that's another issue, too, is if drivers are moving from van to van, and they have familiarity with one restraint system or one door system, we'd like to try to keep it as similar as possible, because it makes it easier for the passengers. And just a reminder that we, the city of River Falls, their employees are not operating the taxis that's through a contract. So we coordinate with the contractor on their operations advice, too, and they give us advice about that. And our, just give us plenty of feedback, so that's good.
Mayor? Mayor, I have one point of clarification, if I could. I think I pointed this out to staff already, but I want to make sure we have it on the record. In both of the agreements for reimbursement by the counties, in the first, now therefore, in the first paragraph, we're missing the word "in." The county, as it reads now, is the county will continue to not provide specialized transportation service the corporate limits and five miles outside the corporate limits of the city of River Falls. I believe we should have the word "in" after "service," so it would read, "will not provide specialized transport service in the corporate limits and five miles outside the corporate limits of the city of River Falls." I think it's a clerical thing. I think the staff can clear it up. I don't think I need to make a motion to amend or anything like that, but I just want to point that out, that it's, both of those agreements need to be changed.
With the knowledge that we are going to be looking over the criteria later on, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then Mr. Bjork, you pulled number five.
Yeah, and I didn't pose it, pull it, because I'm opposed to it. I would just, I would like for us just to share a little bit of why we're looking at making some resolutions to this and share this out to the public a little bit. So I don't know who would be, Mayor Dan, who would be the proper person to share that, what we're looking at for the resolutions, or the amendments on that, but...
I can provide a little background, and if you need some additional, then other staff can elaborate. But essentially, funding criteria for various housing programs that involve workforce, affordable housing, or senior housing, tax credit housing, different programs, they're scored by Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. We have some very attractive sites in River Falls based on the walkability and location proximity to grocery stores and doctors and other things. So the community generally scores high. There are some points that require some specific language or things that are helpful to get additional scores and frankly, increase the probability that we'll get projects delivered within the city limits. One of those is if the city has a plan that supports, specifically supports workforce or affordable housing on a particular census block or an area. We did a South Main plan. The South Main corridor study indicates that for that 700 South Main block, or what's known as the McEwen Block, that we would encourage housing projects on that. But we don't specifically talk about workforce or affordable housing at the site. We just talk about multifamily dense, high-density residential. And so we do have areas within the comprehensive plan, and we've talked about it as a desire of the Council to support. So this would be a way for us to make specific mention of it within a plan, and then that would likely improve the chances of successful application for tax credits, which would likely result in more successful opportunity for these kind of projects to be done at that site. This would not be developer-specific or project-specific. This would be a modification to the South Main corridor plan that would allow any developer that would do that. But obviously, we are working with a specific developer that has an interest in that property and has some purchase agreements in place to try to develop a project there. So that would, we're expecting that we would have in South Main a mix of commercial, market rate, and affordable housing up and down that corridor. And we just want to increase the chances of scoring high on Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority's list for any developer that would come to town. If the, the reason to not approve this modification is if the Council is not in favor of encouraging workforce or affordable housing in the South Main.
Anything else?
Does anybody else have any questions after that? All right, I'm fine, then. All right, then I'll move to that we approve number, what was it, five?
Five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinance number 2017-20. This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of River Falls for the year 2018, and this is a first reading. Does Council have any questions?
I have one concern. There is only one bidder.
Oh, this is for...
Oh, I jump ahead?
Yep. Number eight.
Just for the budget.
For the budget for eighteen.
Okay. We're not considering any potential levy increases to avoid a will tax then at this point?
Nope.
Okay. With that, I move to approve, or I move for approval on...
Well, no, this is just first reading, just for questions. If anybody's got any questions.
Excuse me.
Anybody else?
Otherwise, move on to number nine, is a resolution regarding power plant substation bids for the high voltage reconstruction. This resolution would award the bid to MJ Electric in the amount of $1,477,457 for the high voltage reconstruction. And Kevin had a little something he wanted to talk about real quick, and then I'll...
Sure, I can do that. I can serve for one. I can address that.
I would appreciate that. Yeah. So you believe, you believe the savings is already in that potential bid, then?
I believe so.
It looked good. I looked at a lot of the different items in it, and then, you know, it could be better, but I think it's probably as good as it's going to get. So, all right, thank you, Kevin.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Kevin before I move on? Otherwise, let me, yeah, let me entertain a motion first.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the resolution authorizing bids for the power plant substation high voltage reconstruction and necessary electric components.
Second.
Okay, now, is there any other questions or comments about this? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Yep, looking good. Thanks, Kevin. Resolution referring to, oops, hang on a second here. Okay. So ten is a resolution referring an annexation application to the Plan Commission for report and recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the resolution referring the annexation application to the Plan Commission.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a couple questions, or one question. So I know we looked at the site for a different use in a previous meeting. My question is, is if we go forward with another project of different scope here, are they going to be having their driveway off of Wausen to have less traffic flow issues? And is the state going to require that as well, instead of being on Cemetery?
That's a question that I can answer, but I think Reed might be able to answer that question.
Certainly, we will push for the driveway to be off of Wausen. That's the, not coming off the arterial street. The state, it's a connecting highway. I don't know how heavy they will weigh in on that, but there's adequate distance on Wausen to have access to this. We discourage access on minor arterials to keep them functioning highly. This would be that situation.
Thank you.
That's further down the road.
So Reed, just to clarify, you're suggesting that the access would not be on Cemetery, the, it would be on Wausen instead?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you. The only concern I had was the roundabout being right there and, you know, that was a issue that we looked at in a previous meeting on other scopes. Buildings going in there. So, just wanted to make sure that was still the theme here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the annexation application? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, next move on to report. We have a report from the Planning Commission and Amy Peterson, the, the Planning Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a brief summary of Plan Commission for 2017 and a, and a brief look at 2018. We'll talk just a little bit about membership and again, just a review of this year and then looking forward to next year. If you recall, in 2017, we did make changes to the membership of the Plan Commission. So, you'll see on your left, it is the Mayor, the Park Board Chair, an elder person and four citizens. Those are listed on your right. We do have one vacancy yet on Plan Commission. And if you're not familiar with those names, here are the lovely faces to show you what your Plan Commission is currently. So, our two newest members are on the right-hand side. It's Michael Woosley and Bill Stiesel. So, the role of the Commission, just some, some obvious things here from community planning to zoning, the official map, which I think we'll probably get into a revision on in, in 2018. Development review, tax incremental finance district review, cooperative boundary agreements, which we may touch on in 2018 as well. We'll see annexations. And it is just a really good place to be able to engage our citizens on, on these topics. In 2017, we had some zoning amendment changes. We did remove satellite dishes from the zoning code as far as regulating where they can be placed. We're still working on our fence code. We did add mini storage information to the code, updated some building heights and added the possibility for columbariums in the future. McEwen Alley Vacation is complete tonight. Thank you. And the Plan Commission was instrumental in selecting the consultant for the wayfinding plan. And we did provide both Plan Commission and Board of Appeal trainings in 2017 for both those groups, so. If you look at the numbers a little bit, we did have two final Platts come through. There were eight development review projects that you see on the right-hand side. Again, those are staff-led projects, so Plan Commission didn't necessarily see those as long as everything went well in negotiations between the developer and, and staff. There were eight CSNs that came through so far this year and we're in the midst of one annexation that you looked at this evening with another potential on the way. So, the 2018 forecast is sunny with a few clouds. Again, I mentioned the official map update, which I'm sure Mr. Ronsky will be ecstatic about. He has a list, a, a, a large list of items that need to be updated on the official map. We've got some code updates that are in the potential works. We've heard some things about recreational vehicle parking, if we want to regulate brew pubs in the future, the cell towers, and then some other state modifications that keep coming through as the legislature continues work. These aren't for sure. These are items that staff is going to toss before the Plan Commission at their December meeting and allow them to kick them around, add items to the list and, and filter through some, some of those priorities for 2018. So, if you have any questions, I'll entertain those.
No questions. Thanks, Amy.
Yep.
Okay, next, we're going to have an update on the wayfinding report from City Planner Brandy Howell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You'll recall earlier this year, we hired Guide Studio out of Ohio to work with us to prepare the wayfinding plan document. Just a refresher on what the objectives of the project are. We want to create welcoming, memorable community gateways that set a positive tone for visitors. We want to provide wayfinding that allows visitors to comfortably navigate through our community. We want to improve the overall aesthetics in general and eliminate sign redundancy and reduce visual clutter on our streetscape. So, we established a steering committee for this project and the members, the representative areas are on the left. So, we had Chris Blasis from the Chamber of Commerce, Scott Morset from the City Council, Susan Reese was our representative from both the Plan Commission and the Park Board, Jolene Larson from the Bid Business Improvement District, Amy and I from Community Development, Mary Zimmerman from our Communications Staff, and Mike Stifter from Operations. And on the right, we had various stakeholders from UWRF, CBT C, the School District, the Downtown Review Committee, Community Arts Base, River Falls Gymnastics, Kenny River Land Trust, River Falls Area Hospital and Vibrant Health. So, all of those folks were actually present. We sent out more broad, broad-based invitations to some community groups, but these are the ones that decided it was important for them to be part of the discussion at the table. So, the process started with Guide. They did some analysis and evaluation of our community, looking at our plan documents, doing research from, from their home base. And then they came here and did some intensive walking and driving tours during the visit that they had in June and July. So, they had a big discovery workshop that was focused at getting some of the details from our community, the steering committee and our stakeholders. What are the top destination and travel routes primarily is what came out of those meetings. And then over the summer, we had several, several iterations of conceptual design that came out of, out of those meetings. So, the steering committee was able to look at three, I believe it was three different design concepts for the family of signs. And then it was whittled down over the course of the summer to what you'll be seeing in the next slide as the selected design for the family of signs. And so, now they've given us a couple of different plans for staff to review internally. One is the, the large-scale map that has individual sign locations with the programming, the message schedule, that we need to just make sure that what they have given us as far as the sign messages appropriate for each of those locations. So, that's something that we're doing as staff. And after that, we'll be able to get the final documents. But here is the great unveiling, so the sign design. This would be the gateway signage that you would see coming down Highway 35, for example, as you're coming into our community. So, this particular one is weathered concrete with a stone base. There's an exposed rebar. I don't know if you can see the detail from where you're sitting, but there's a little bit of a river path showing through there and that's where the rebar is coming through. There's LED lights in the letter forms and then there's a routed lettering for the small type, which says the Welcome to River Falls on it. So, moving down the sign family, so what you see here is what you would have in front of the community facilities. So, City Hall would probably have the more grand stone-based sign, whereas maybe Public Works might have the simpler version. So, the more out of the way, less publicly visited public facilities would probably have the sign style on the right. Community, sorry, not community, the corporate parks would also probably have one of these two sign varieties. And the park signage, so again, the larger community parks would have probably the, the grander sign on the left with the stone base. The one just next to that has a little parking emblem. So, whenever we have a public parking in addition to the park itself, that would be the sign type. And then the one on the far right that's just black is our existing kiosks where we have the Kenny Trail signs. So, they're just giving us a little replacement sign when it comes time to get new signs for those trail systems. And these are the more, you know, traditional directional signs that you'd see as you're driving up and down the town. So, there's trail, but trailblazers, the vehicular directionals. And then as you get to the right of the screen, we've got the pedestrian directional and then a kiosk, which is the one with the little person sitting, sitting next to it. So, our next steps for the process tonight, we're asking for, you know, your general thumbs up on this project that we can go ahead and direct Guide Studio to produce the final documents that would be coming back to you hopefully in the very near future for review and approval. And once those plans are approved, then we'd be able to get the bid documents out to, to whoever the sign manufacturing companies are. So, what we will be getting from Guide is a final design plan, program and message schedule, the phasing plan. So, we're going to look at what are the costs, what are, where are we going to get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of visibility and usefulness of these signs? And then the bid worksheet. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions and I can flip it back to the pictures if you want to look at those.
Anybody have questions for Brandy?
How many total signs are there?
Ooh, there's a, um, how many are there? I don't recall. It was several pages worth of, I don't know, eight and a half by 11, so the details.
Or under 100.
100 signs?
Yeah.
Oh, do you have any? Pro, yeah, we'll say that's a good estimate. Cause if you think about every single time, sign type going, you know, here's the Glen Park, turn here sign to like your, there's quite a few.
And then, so the signs like you mentioned on 35, when you're coming in, it says Welcome to River Falls, that'd be taken down and then we're looking to put in a new sign in place of where all these old signs are and potentially new locations of new signs.
Correct. So, and a lot of times those, the information on the signs that we have now are located on multiple signs. So, it will be consolidating to help reduce some of that visual clutter.
Do you budget on, is what we're thinking, anticipating that it costs to do all this?
We have some money in the CIP for implementation and there's also bits and pieces of it in different areas. So, I'll give you some examples. I think, I think I know where this is headed, so I wanted to, um, so. The, the phasing plan, I think that, that Brandy mentioned is the important part of this because the expectation, at least by the city administrator, is not that we're going to order 175 signs on pallets, have them loaded out to operations and then go out and, and a month replace every sign we've got in town. So, we'll phase these. There's signs right now that are in disrepair. We've kind of had a moratorium on ordering new signs for things while we've been doing this design. We've got, um, the, there's some signs that are private, kind privately owned, like the Whitetail Ridge Corporate Park sign that's in, got some disrepair. So, the EDC is kind of saying, well, what are we going to do with our sign? We don't have signs yet for Sterling Ponds Corporate Park. So, the phasing, I think is going to be, alright, Sterling Ponds, we have money budgeted for putting up signs. We don't have signs yet. Once we have an adopted plan, that would be in the first phase. Some of these downtown are guide signs. I think what the phasing plan will say is, out of 175 signs, here's the 15 that you really ought to do right away. So, some of those 15 might be go out, take down an old one, put up a new one because it, you want to get the base sign backbone in. And I, I can check on the CIP and get back to the council on the dollar amounts we have, but we've, we funded doing the plan and then there's some assumptions in the CIP about partnerships. So, the expectation is that bid will, will contribute to some of these signs. The EDC will, will use tax incremental financing money for some of the corporate park signs. We might get some assistance from LINA or UWRF or others to help us kind of fit this community signage together. But I, I don't want to give people the impression like we'll have a plan and we're just going to, we've got $180,000 set aside and we're going to go out there and, and get signs replaced. And there's some signs that, that won't match exactly the plan, but will, in the phasing plan, say that's going to stay because it's a good investment. It's, it will fit well enough with the plan that we don't want to disturb it. And so, the example I can think of off the top of my head is the entrance sign on the south end of town that was installed by Comforts of Home, even though it may not be an exact match, although it's pretty, it's pretty similar here. We're, we're not likely to go out and take that sign down and put up the entrance sign that's recommended in the wayfinding plan. So, we're going to be thoughtful about that. My best recollection of the plan is it's like $25,000 every other year to start to implement this. But we'll also use, to, to be frank, we'll use some maintenance money too. So, if, I mean, if there's signs like the Brown Glen Park sign that says turn here, well, we replace that every so often, either because it is removed by somebody or it's, it's damaged or something. And so, that sign, we may make a decision, alright, we're just going to take that out of maintenance money, but we're going to order the one on the plan. So, now somebody who knows more about this should probably talk, but I have, but that's kind of, if you, if you want kind of the city administrator's view of how we would implement something like this, that's the plan. The plan is to have our friends help us with it where we can, but there's some backbone stuff that the city would do and then there is some funding already in the CIP, some of which would be included in the authorized 2017-18 biennial budget. But most of the money in the 2017-18 budget was just to get the plan done. So, there's not a lot of, we won't have a lot of money laying around to go buy a, a new entrance sign or something. And I don't think we're, at this point, looking for corporate sponsorships of the signs, but that's also a possibility too, especially for some of the monument signs coming into town. It's, we're not likely to put your logo on there, but there may be some community institutions that would like to purchase a $10,000 sign to put out on 35 or something like that. So, anything, you have anything to add to that, Brandy, or anything that varies from what I?
I would agree with that. And another example of signs that are not likely to change anytime soon, City Hall, the lettering on the side of the building, for example, matches pretty closely to what they're recommending for other lettering that would go on buildings. So, as maybe the police department gets a different sign, it would match pretty closely to what we have now, but it would still meet the, the sign plan.
I don't think there's going to be a recommendation from staff to do a wholesale rebranding. So, that does hap, I've been, I'm familiar with other cities that do that. They say we're going to, you know, we've got this nice new brand. We've got a plan. We're going to go out and have a uniform look. But I don't, I don't suspect that'd be how we would implement the plan here in River Falls. Even if we would want to, it'd be hard to imagine it raising to the priority where we could really do that. It'd be, the plan will be significant. There'll be some sticker shock, I think, when you add up all the signs and you go, whoa, that's, that's a lot of money for, for things. Glen Park, and it would be an example. We're going to do the Glen Park, assuming the council approves further modifications and implementation of the Glen Park plan. Well, that would be a good time for us to have a conversation about, alright, the sign plan recommends these 12 signs in and around Glen Park. Should we go ahead and budget $40,000 or whatever it would be to do that at the time or not? You can make a decision at that time what you want to do. So, it'll, it'll be something everybody can be proud of and we want the implementation for them to be proud of too.
The sign plan includes the whole gamut of signs as well. So, the kiosk, for example, is one that the Steering Committee was kind of on the fence about whether we really needed pedestrian kiosks in our downtown, but we opted to go ahead and ask Guide to provide us with a, a version of it if we ever did want to install a kiosk in our downtown.
Would that, this project include historical signs?
Like plaques for buildings that is, does not.
And my understanding is that, that this isn't actually on our agenda for, for any action, but you're just looking for informal feedback from?
Correct. So, yeah, if there's specific direction that we need to give to the consultant before they provide additional documentation for us, that would be good to receive now.
Okay. Well, just having, just seen it now, I'm, I'm impressed. They're, they are simple but classy and I think would make, you know, match kind of the River Falls vibe if you were, so I'm impressed.
Great, thank you. They took good, a lot of pain to get to that point, not pain, but they took good care to get, to get us here.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
I have a question. Did you, as part of the planning for Glen Park, I know that the signage there was kind of part of the planning process, and there was a fair amount of citizen feedback on that. How did you kind of cross-check with them?
Well, we provided the consultant for the wayfinding project with the plan.
Okay.
Site plan for Glen Park and some of the, like, the facility that's going in there, just to give them a sense of what the, the feeling, the architectural feel is gonna be for that area. As far as the park plan, I don't know if they have a specific sign for the, coming out of that project.
We're still looking.
Okay, so we, yeah, the consultants are staff is the intermediary.
Have your consultant meet my consultant, no?
So we're working through that.
Yeah, I would suggest you do that, 'cause I, it would be a shame to have those things not kind of sync up, sync together.
In terms of Glen Park, I think, as far as the wayfinding project goes, you would only really be getting the sign that's the park entrance sign, and then the signs from, like, Main Street saying here is your way to get to the park. So the internal signs for the park itself would probably be coming out of the, the park plan.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Brandy? Okay, thank you. Uh, administrators' reports. Scott's got anything for us, or you guys got, anybody's got any questions for Scott?
I, I do want to mention that, and it was mentioned with the first reading, but that the, the city council's approved a two-year operating budget for the, our operations, and this is, this, the 2018 will be the second year of the two-year budget. That, that full budget is available on our website, also copies of it at the library, and there will be a second reading and public hearing at the, the next council, city council meeting on the 28th, so that'd be an opportunity. If anybody wanted to formally provide comments on the record, they could do that at the next meeting, and they certainly could contact members of my staff, Al Rollick, the finance director, Julie, Julie Bergstrom, assistant city administrator, myself, with comments they might have. The, the levy that's proposed in the 2018 budget is, is not changed from when the council considered it a year ago.
Anybody have, go ahead?
Yeah, Scott, I, and maybe this is a question for Reed, but I, I want to talk a little bit more, find out a little bit more about the impasse that we seem to be at with the state over the Highway 29 South between Cemetery and Double F. It would appear that, that the DOT wants to, is insisting on raising the limit to 55 miles an hour down there, and designing it for, for, for such. We want to stay at 45, and it's, it says in the staff report that we're in an impasse, so my question is, how do we, you know, if we've, if we've said this and they've said this, and we're at an impasse, what's, what's our next steps, and how do we, you know, how do we move forward? And more importantly, how do we keep it at 45? I don't think 55 is appropriate in that section, especially with, you know, Comforts of Homes and all the, all those recent subdivision construction we've had down there. I think 45 is plenty.
So just, just a slight clarification, if I could. It, it is 55 from County Road FF to... Haskins driveway plus a couple hundred feet, you know? So in, into, you know, it, it changes to 45 before you get to Cemetery Road, but not that far before. Problem with the road is, you go out there, you do a speed study, the traffic, the traffic's going every bit of 55 out there, so to just throw up 45 signs out at FF, the only way that's gonna be driven at 45 is for this guy to be out there 24/7, 365, and that's not necessarily a good situation. What we'd like from the DOT is to work with the pavement replacement project to design a roadway that calms people down a little bit as they're approaching the city at FF to Cemetery Road, and, and hopefully naturally gets them to go that 45 rather than feeling wide open. That's the impasse we're having. They were very insistent on keeping 55, kind of backed off to maybe 50, but the more concerning thing is that they're, they're, they're kind of throwing some of the facilities, design manual type stuff at us, saying things like, you know, if we have a median, well, the median curve has to be 10 feet away from the driveline. You start doing that, we're just fooling ourselves into, again, creating a 60 mile an hour road, signing it 45, and it's gonna be a, a trouble for us forever. So we're working with them. We haven't given up yet. We're having some stern discussion regarding it to see if we can find, find a table to play at together on that. So stay tuned. We are, we have a little bit of hope, but...
I appreciate updating that, but just with the density that's starting to form down there, I just, I, I know we've got access points at, at Double F and up at Cemetery, but I, I just don't know, I don't, I don't like...
None of the roads we're putting, our developments we're putting in have roads out to...
No, they don't have access points, but there's, but the level of traffic that we're having down there.
Reed, what's the potential timing?
The project timeframe they're looking at is like 2021, but things, you know, things get going now. They're, 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 they're raring to go with that project. And again, we have a significant amount of money that we can contribute to the project. We've been collecting money from our developments, knowing that that road is part of, you know, influenced by many of these homes coming in on the south side. And, and, you know, I, I flat out asked him, I said, how many communities come up to you at, at the beginning of one of these projects, five years out, and, and flop down a wallet on the table? They said, well, none. And I said, okay, you know, we, we do want to have this road, you know, be a welcoming, a welcoming place into our community here. 45 is not that ridiculous. It's seven seconds is what we're talking about, the difference between 45 and 50. So we're having some frank discussions about it. Are we making headway? Doesn't feel like it. Have I given up? Not totally. So hopefully within the next couple weeks, we can give you a little more solid answer on whether, whether we might need to pursue something different.
Glenn, it begs the question, if we don't, if we don't get 45, do we still have to contribute the funding?
I don't believe so. No, I would put a lock on the wallet and save it for 20 years until the road needs to be redone again and, and wait, you know, wait for that other opportunity. But no, I don't, we don't have, they're gonna have some things they come at us with, most of it we could say no to, and it's just unfortunate. So we'll, we'll see. We've had some great successes with the DOT. Cascade Avenue, Radio Road interchange, jug handles moving smoothly, so stay tuned. Just wanted to keep you up to date on that because it is a concern. We've had a lot of discussions with them regarding it, trying to convey some of the local sentiment. You've heard it from your constituents. I've heard it, you know, from the residents. Speed is a huge issue at Cemetery Road. A lot of that has to do with how that road feels. You come down headed south and it just says, you know, hit the accelerator, and I think we can do better, so.
I would tend to agree with, with all the comments made. I get concerns from folks that are walking and running down the, both sides of the trails there. You got paved walking paths about 20 feet off the road on both sides of that, there, and now if they're coming through there at 45, 55 miles an hour, and it's open for them, well, if the speed limit's 45, there, some folks are gonna push that limit up to 55, you know, and if they're coming through Cemetery, this is another thing that we've all heard, they're coming through Cemetery at 45 and going up the hill to come back down on South Main there, they're cooking. And I, I think that's a little excessive and unsafe for our community members, and I, I really hope the state would look at that a little deeper when they implement their plan.
If, if we are at an impasse, I think we will get somebody here from the DOT to speak directly to you about, about why we can't find common ground on that, so.
And Reed, and part of this conversation, too, is all to try to clean up that corner, too, especially going north on 29 to go, and then to go east on Cemetery, knowing most trucks will avoid that corner. I know companies that are down in Prescott, they intentionally go straight ahead and go through town instead of taking the right there because of that corner, so that corner will be clean and rectified, so it's more truck-friendly? Or they'll still go through town to avoid that corner?
That started out as part of the conversation. The, the exact scope that the DOT is committed to is not 100% clear at this moment, but, but that was, that certainly has been part of the discussion.
That sounds suspiciously like roundabout.
No, although we were certainly pushing them to look to a roundabout out at FF. It seems like an appropriate thing to look at, but that's...
Yeah, a lot of major accidents are happening.
That's not gonna, that's not gonna happen, so.
Yeah, I think, I think right at the corner of Cemetery and South Main there, that hydrant on the southeast corner has been taken out quite a few times by bigger vehicles.
Yes, and then it was taken out by us to prevent that from happening.
Also, it's gone now, I haven't even, I noticed it when it's knocked over, but I don't notice it when it's gone, right?
We will report back to you.
Thank you, Reed.
Hopefully a good news.
Anything else? Anybody?
Yes.
Scott or Scott?
City offices are closed November 23rd and 24th, and the River Dazzle event is on November 24th from 1:00 to 7:00 PM.
I do have an update for council. Attended the Pierce County Board meeting this morning. They were taking up the issue of library funding. They did approve the increase of 5%, so they are now at 80% funding for our libraries.
Good, good, good. Okay, and we're not gonna be going in the closed session, so...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.